Good evening. It is 5:30, so we're going to call the meeting to order. I'd remind you to turn your cell phones to silent or vibrate, and then let's all stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris, would you take the role, please?
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Berg? Councilmember Dalby?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Mayor Lozio?
Here.
Items on the consent agenda. Minutes from regular meeting number 30 on October 5th, 2021, as presented. Acknowledgement of September financial reports and payment of bills submitted by the Finance Department. Recommend reappointment of Mark Hansen and Lisa Walker to the Atumwa Housing Authority. Terms expire 11/22/2023. Approve the appointment of Austin Kennedy to the position of Airport Line Technician at the Atumwa Airport on or about October 31st, 2021. Approve the appointment of Colton Mitchell to the position of Airport Line Technician at the Atumwa Airport on or about October 31st, 2021. Approve the appointment of Cooper Shelton to the position of Airport Line Technician at the Atumwa Airport on or about October 31st, 2021. Community Planning Month Proclamation. Red Ribbon Week Proclamation for the Atumwa Elks Lodge Number 347. Accept donation from Main Street Atumwa for the 2019 Polaris to be utilized by the City Parks Department. Resolution Number 192, 2021, approve cybersecurity handbook for the city of Atumwa. Resolution Number 194, 2021, approve update to city of Atumwa personnel policies. Beer and/or liquor applications for Mizu Hibachi &amp; Sushi Incorporated at 1111 Quincy Avenue, Suite 111. Club 888 at 123 West Third Street. Mexico Lindo at 530 West Second Street. All applications pending final inspections.
Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I'd move the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of removing Item 10 to be voted on separately.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
So Resolution Number 192, 2021, approve cybersecurity handbook for the city of Atumwa.
And I would call on Barbara Kojo, our Human Relations person, to give us an update on that. So Barbara, you have the floor.
So the cybersecurity handbook has actually had collaboration between myself, our IT department, and Kayla, our Finance Director. Just taking a look at some of our existing policies and also looking at some new requirements that are out there. The policy, a lot of the policies that we currently had had not been updated for quite a while. And so with all of the new technology that's out there, whether it's email or the Internet use or our credit cards that we accept at the clerk's office or out at the landfill or things like that, some of our federal grant money. This cybersecurity handbook has got seven different policies that are enclosed in that. But it's all up-to-date, taking all of those things into consideration. And each one of those policies that are in there, we've reviewed them with our lawyers. I mean, we've gone through all of the, we've worked collaboratively and also worked with them for review on all of that, too.
I think you mentioned to me in a private conversation that one of the things, we wanted to be sure we were in compliance with all the current state and federal regulations, and that was a big part of the revision of this handbook.
Absolutely.
Any questions from council?
Yes. So Barb, two things, I guess. That would be inclusive of all staff, is that correct?
Correct.
All employees?
Yes.
Okay. And then I was curious, are department heads responsible for reviewing that policy? Or does each employee get their own copy, or how does that work?
So what's going to happen is, once we get that approved with our new, the new UKG system, I'll actually be able to upload all of that into that system as a policy. And so any policy that is loaded into UKG, all employees will have availability to pull that at any point in time. What we will do is, anytime there's a new employee that is brought on to the city, we will, we, as in HR, when we do the orientation, we will review some of, not every single thing, but some of the highlights of each one of those. There is a sign-off on that last page for our employees to sign to say that they've received a copy of it. We've reviewed it. That will be housed in UKG as well. What we're going to do to roll it out is we're going to discuss it at our Thursday Senior Staff Meeting and then push it out to all of our employees as well. So within the next couple of weeks, all of our employees will see that. And we are going to ask our department heads and then some of our supervisors to review that information as well.
Thank you.
I have a question, just to follow up on what Councilperson Myers had said. You said that all new employees would have to sign off on that. As you do policy revisions and load those into the new system, will you require the current employees to sign off on those as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if you're comfortable, entertain a motion to approve the handbook as presented in your packets tonight with the explanations from Barbara.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Matt. Bob?
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries 4-0. Okay, at this point, I'll need a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Rick.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Item D on our agenda, we would like to have a report from Phil Rath, our City Administrator. And Phil, you have several items.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. The first thing up on the agenda here is the CVB, or Meet Atumwa, update, the Quarterly Update, and that is presented by Andy Whartonberg. So I'll call Mr. Whartonberg to the podium, please.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to just provide an update for Meet Atumwa over the last few months. We're going to start with rebranding, which we accomplished this spring. You see, we went from the Greater Atumwa Convention Visitor Bureau to Meet Atumwa. I just want to walk you through the process a little bit, what we did, why we did it. We felt that we needed a more proactive brand, reflected where we were today, not where we were five years ago. And there's basically three parts to this, well, actually four. First was to come up with a new name. And you can see, we went with a call-to-action name, like most CVBs are doing. And after much debate on our board, we came up with Meet Atumwa, because we really want to become a destination for any kind of gathering. From there came the fun part. We actually had to decide on a logo design. We sourced this out to several local designers. You can see some of the ones we came up with. We were quite happy with the one we came up with. And finally, we had to come up with a tagline. And we wanted to sort of highlight the fact that we're a little different than other meeting destinations. And again, one of the keys to branding or rebranding is not so much about what we've got, it's about what they want. You know, when you're selling a destination. And that's why we came up with Iowa Meets the World. Well, this was a great COVID project, but then there was the implementation of this, which involved a lot of things, you know, just changing our website, our collateral, restaurant guide, everything like that. The process took about three months. I'm happy to say, we were able to get it all done for about $3,000. So our rebranding is done now. And hopefully, in three to five years, we'll rebrand again. Just to wrap up on the Babe Ruth World Series. As you know, the tournament, we did have nine teams here. The team from New Jersey ended up winning the tournament. I think you all saw a copy of our economic impact, which was our university motto, which was about $2.6 million. Were there bugs and things we had to work out? Absolutely. But all in all, I mean, not only do we have this impact, what we hope is to leverage this, excuse me, and use it to attract further tournaments in the future. Obviously, sport tourism is going to be a big priority for Atumwa going down the road. We just completed a conference here for the professional developers of Iowa. I wanted to mention this. This actually took place a couple of weeks ago. We had about 130 people here. The reason I wanted to bring this up is, I think this is kind of a template for how we want to conduct a conference. You can see there was a lot of events at Bridgeview Center, but also we did events in Canteen Alley, where we had five different local restaurant vendors there. So again, moving forward, as we're attracting these conferences, we want to really consider not only spilling some revenue into Bridgeview Center, but also getting some into the community there. We got some super positive feedback from PDI on this. And hopefully, again, this is something we can leverage down the road. I wanted to mention that we have completed a marketing plan for the hotel when we're ready to go. Basically, there's eight points to this. I won't take a lot of detail. First is the formation of a task force, which we've done, which will be Meet Atumwa, Bridgeview Center, and somebody from Cobblestone. Central Information Office, I think this is a point we've discussed. I think we really need to have one person, whether it's my office, somebody from the city, whatever, that's disseminating info, disseminating, you know, we've had some issues with different information out there. Unified information points, unified messaging points. We all have to be working on the same page. What is this hotel? What are the amenities? Bridgeview Center amenities, off-site amenities, things like that. Our primary targets are going to be meetings and conferences, sporting events, weddings, and corporate business. And then we're going to do a series of macro campaigns, which is going to be heavily into social media, primarily retargeting paper clicks, things like that, Facebook display ads. And what micro campaigns are, is we're going to focus on individual planners and people like that. And we're going to do something which a lot of CVBs are doing right now, which is what they call proactive RFPs. In other words, we're not going to wait until the RFP comes out and says, "Look, we know you have a conference coming up in '22 or '23. We're going to go after it." And finally, you know, once the hotel is along, we'll have fan trips, site visits. But also, I want to get just a note on these macro campaigns here. One of the things we want to do is sort of milestones. In other words, obviously, you know, we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony, but just to kind of build excitement for the property itself. So again, thank you for, the City Council, for your support. We're very excited to move forward and try and sell this hotel. Esports gaming event is now happening. It's going to be OG Con. You know, we worked in original gaming in Atumwa, March 8th to the 20th. You can see there's going to be three different competitions. We're working with a company called Real Time Strategies. The good news is, you can see there's different competitions because it's going to appeal to different demographics. I'm still learning about the gaming industry, but apparently, somebody who plays Rocket League, somebody who plays fighting competition are completely different people. But anyway, we are going to incorporate our video game history. We're hoping to have a night out at the arcade and feature Walter Day and the Video Game Hall of Fame. Good news is, our fee to Real Time Strategy is about 26,000, I'm sorry, about 23,000. We already have 20,000 of that in grants. The rest we should make up in ticket sales and sponsorships. You know, the idea behind this is to grow this organically and have this become a signature event for Atumwa. We're continuing with our social media, of course, event support. I would urge anyone who has events to, you know, that's something that's been ongoing for us. And obviously, we keep a presence on social media. So how are we doing? We're doing better. You can see, this is just our hotel motel tax revenue from '20 and '21. You can see we're creeping up there a little bit. I'm anticipating a really nice check for our first quarter, you know, with Babe Ruth World Series, PDI, Halloweatapalooza, things like that. So I think we're definitely moving in the right direction. Have we recovered completely from COVID? No. I'm not in the tourism industry, but it's, you know, people, I talk to my colleagues, we're definitely getting there. We're moving in the right direction. Finally, as most of you know, I will be leaving my post on December 31st. You know, my job could, cannot be done in a vacuum. And I just want to say thanks, first of all, to City Council for your support, and also to everyone from the city. I've gotten nothing but positive support from everybody sitting at this table here, Phil as well. So many thanks to everybody. Questions? Comments?
Any questions?
Andy, where are you going?
North Carolina.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that.
You've done a remarkable job.
Pardon me?
You've done a remarkable job.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that. And if anyone would like to torment me, I'll be here for another two months, so.
I'll be at your office in the morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, Phil?
All right, thank you. Next up, we have a Computer Aided Dispatch, or CAD, presentation. Then I'll be giving, I believe, a coordinated effort between Chief Farrington, Tim Richmond, and Sheriff Phillips, with Chief Farrington taking the lead.
Thank you, Phil. Council and Mayor, thanks for giving me your time to give you this presentation. Just to correct the City Administrator, it looks like I'm taking the whole lead here. We did this for the Board of Supervisors earlier. Sheriff Phillips took the brunt and carried the football for me, so I'm going to have to do that here tonight. But with me tonight, TJ Milliken, he's the supervisor for all of my dispatchers. Obviously, next is Sheriff Don Phillips. Right next to him is Trevor Milton. Mr. Milton is the representative from Central Square, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. And then obviously, Tim Richmond with Emergency Management. So with that being said, this is going to be an abbreviated presentation. To do a full presentation, it'd almost be an entire work session to go over all the information regarding this. But this is a project that's been in the work. And the whole point tonight is, you know, all I'm looking for is continued support, or your support as a council. We're not looking for votes, money, or anything like that. I just want to bring you, we want to bring you all up to speed as to what we've been working on and collaborating. So back in about 2017, both of our agencies started looking at a CAD and RMS system. CAD is Computer Aided Dispatch, RMS Record Management System. Both of us, both agencies had inundated systems, but the most important feature is neither one of them in the history of our departments have ever communicated. AllPoints, which is being used by the county, and CIS, which is being used by the PD, there is no continuity, there is no communication between those systems and software. So we developed an evaluation platform. We looked at multiple vendors back in 2017. And we had pretty much landed on Central Square as being that entity or that vendor that we wanted. At that time, money was the issue. You know, CAD and record management systems are not inexpensive in and of themselves. It's the very backbone of a police department. Everything, as soon as that call for service comes in, all the way to evidence and reports getting to courts for prosecution of crimes, all of that is based off of CAD and RMS. Basically, we've networked with other agencies that are using, currently using Central Square. We've had nothing but good reports regarding Central Square and their systems that they're actually using present day. So let's fast forward to, you know, just a few months ago. We brought Central Square back in to give us another demonstration. But this time, we wanted to bring in stakeholders, people within both of our agencies that are going to be those end users to really get a feel for what that CAD and software is going to be able to do for us and do for their jobs. So here, a little bit later on the presentation, you get to see some videos of, and hear directly from them. So we're going to break this stuff down real quick for the sake of time, but it's basically, you know, a single access point for all information regarding in-house records, whether it be the PD or county. And I'd be remiss not to say that this is a, this is an all-inclusive public safety. I think a lot of times when we say the word "public safety", people tend to think of law enforcement. It's not just law enforcement. It's law enforcement, fire, EMS, emergency management. It's a collaborative effort when we talk about public safety. What the system will do is, it integrates with all the state databases and required databases, such as the tracks, mocks, and clips, that we have to now. With that single login, all the dashboard for each individual user can all be specifically set up for their workflow and the job that they currently do. That's something that we cannot do right now. And then basically, that information sharing process, like we talked about, is going to be, there's going to be continuity there. It'll be instantaneous. We're going to talk a little bit more later on about officer safety, but where that becomes really important is, right now, is our current situation. If a sheriff's deputy pulls somebody over, maybe they located weapons on them or guns, and they bond out on a charge, unless that deputy walks that information physically over or sends an email, we don't have that information. And now we have an Atumwa police officer maybe stopping that individual a couple hours later, not having that information upfront. It's a completely configurable system. And the idea behind that is, we can totally set this system up for that end user and how, what workflow they need. So there's not a lot of useless or items that they don't need to see or clutter. It can be configured directly for their job and what they need to be doing. This is going to talk about, there's key elements built in, so we don't miss information, and we get alerts. Something right now, we have no idea if we pull over John Q. Citizen and they have civil papers that need to be served, or weapon permits, or different things like that. This would allow us to have those flags and have that information with this continuity and this collaboration between both departments. Again, these are just key features. It's not all-inclusive. But other important things, photos, jail photos taken directly pop up with master names. So when we're out in the car or out in the field, we actually get photographs of who we're talking to. Unfortunately, not everybody wants to tell us the truth every time we make contact with them and who they really are. Our patrol officers are able to process in bulk officers' reports, which, again, efficiency. The two, the two main goals here are collaboration and efficiency with this type of software system. And then all that information immediately goes out to our MDTs, which is the mobile data terminals in the officer's cars. This is Sergeant Aaron Boes with our Patrol Division, and we're going to listen to his take on the presentation by Central Square.
Central Square software gives the ability to access a greater amount of information in a shorter amount of time. This is incredibly important when responding to emergency calls or kind of gas. Our current system does not have an user-friendly interface, so important information is easily left off of course. The Central Square software is more intuitive and flexible and limited information, which allows us to limit the states and increase efficiency and increase our productivity. The challenge of this is the sharing of information briefly among agencies. For the first time, in my career, we would be able to do that and eliminate the data entry. This, again, would increase our efficiency and our productivity.
Again, so when we talk about CAD, Computer Aided Dispatch, that is our dispatch center, they would all be on the same system when they're taking calls for service or 911 calls. Right now, since we're on two separate systems, if there's information, it has to get passed amongst both those individuals in a physical sense. This is all integrated to where each dispatcher is looking at the same type of information and system, which obviously correlates to much easier to do your job under those high-stress calls for service. And speaking about dispatch, this is going to be a video with Supervisor TJ Milliken.
My name is TJ Milliken, the dispatch supervisor at the Atumwa Police Department. Among many other benefits, Central Square has the ability to share recording and location of dispatch and other officers on the system. The system even has the ability to instantly push officer's dispatch files to officers and always ensuring both are logged in. Officers who fully utilize the system, allowing them to eliminate old spreadsheets and data stored in separate locations, ensuring they perform all their job duties and monitoring the place on the map. The ability to share data and records between departments, such as outstanding civil papers, warrants, jail records, caution indicators for officers, will lead to no chance of information slipping through the cracks. The elimination of the redundant menu and data entry improves streamlined workflow and the automatic reporting features will save an immeasurable amount of time between all users in records, jail, patrol, administration, and 911 dispatch.
So we're going to move on to records management. Again, that single login, and when I keep beating that, right now, there's times where you may have to log in and log out of multiple different types of platforms to get to the information you need. Can't drive that home enough, that it's all collaborative, it's all intuitive, and it's in one system. The forms, when we talk about auto-population, preloading, again, these are forms that are created, neat, clean system. It's all across the continuity across those forms. Right now, any photographs, audio recordings, anything of that nature regarding that case, none of those can be directly linked back to that incident or that case file. You've got to go to a separate area to look for that information and coordinate those two things. That becomes extremely important when we talk about sending information to the county attorney, and it just creates loopholes for things to get missed. We now, with this system, all that information gets linked directly back to that case file, so it's all in one concentrated area. Report fields, you know, under the current system that we're using, depending on the report you're taking, you have a lot of extra fields there and a lot of clutter that you may not need to fill out. This system will get rid of all that for you, and you don't have to scroll through those areas. Again, pretty more efficient report-taking in time. Our evidence, this is another huge facet with the police department, any police department. And I can go through these bullet points, but again, collaboration and efficiency are the main names with, main goals here with our evidence. So this is Officer Kaitlin Overturf. She's our evidence officer, and she's got a short video here of what she thought of the software.
This is Kaitlin Overturf, and I'm the evidence officer with the Atumwa Police Department. The Central Square software will give me the ability to manage what officers are required to fill out and submitting evidence into the property group and speed up the process when logging into our system. I will also have the ability to send a report back to the case officer if I have questions or concerns about property that is being submitted. This will then give the case officer a task on their dashboard to be completed, which would give a quick turnaround as I can currently rely on emails to communicate to the case officer, and it can delay the process by several days. Currently, when logging property in our system, I use a separate software to document it. If I have to reference back to the case for any questions, I have to log into the current software system to give the answers I need. This takes time and two springs to complete the process. Central Square will eliminate the need of two softwares to be used. One of my jobs as an evidence officer is returning or destroying property when the case is closed or the statute of limitations is upheld. Central Square will allow me to set a date reminder when the time is up for the property, knowing, noting my need quicker, and allow me to purge property sooner.
So some takeaway at the administration level with Sheriff Phillips and myself. There's other features that we just don't have with CIS. Some of the data analytics is going to help us to show where we need to spend more time when it comes to our call for service. Again, the transparency, the connectivity between our agencies. The other huge part is, right now, if we, if we come up with a special, if we, if we need a form, we have to contact our vendor, and then they have to create that form for us at an additional cost. With Central Square, any Word document can become digitized. So our main goal here is to basically go paperless. And this system is going to be, allow us that option to move forward in that direction. So any form that can be related to a Word document So any form that can be related to a Word document, we're able to create in-house at no extra cost, other than the man time or person time to complete that form. The redaction, you know, it has built-in software for our redaction purposes. So again, time-saving, we don't have to have a separate program or a manual process to do redaction when it's needed. And then again, as I already said, it's a collaboration between all public safety entities. Another cool feature that is coming to Central Square is a continuity and a sharing of information of all police departments that are on Central Square. They're currently working on that now. So if they have police departments in another area of the state or even out of state, depending on what kind of rights you give each other, you can actually coordinate and get information from those other departments. We recently had a situation where we had an individual here in town that was located deceased in a lagoon. That type of information sharing or coordination could have been just immeasurable and would have maybe sped up that process. So the other big thing for me as a chief of police is less time doing paperwork equals officers, more time with officers out on the street. This is just a quick graph to show you over the last seven years. This is just 911 calls. This isn't non-emergency calls coming into the PD and the Sheriff's Department. So over the last seven-year period, OPD alone has had a 24.26% increase in 911 calls alone. So again, when we talk about, you know, trimming the fat, so to speak, and getting rid of the clutter and efficiency, this is going to make us be able to respond better to those emergencies in our community. And then lastly, the mayor's going to, yeah, he's going to appreciate this, but the mayor, everybody was super excited when we asked them to shoot these videos, by the way. That was like, not fun for a lot of people, but I'm glad they did it. So we'll hear a message from the mayor here.
Mayor Lozio, I'm happy to support the CAD program, curated dispatch. I think it's appropriate use of the ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act. I was convinced after listening to our police and sheriff deputies of the need for an integrated system that helps the officers on duty to be able to talk to each other. I was shocked as a child to find out that in this 21st century, our officers couldn't talk to one another. And I gave an example of if a policeman or a sheriff's deputy stopped somebody tonight, and they have weapons and are dangerous, they can't relay that message to each other because of the lack of integration between the two computer systems. So we have really worked hard with our sheriff and chief of police and staff of both agencies to find a system that will work together, provide for the safety of the officers and deputies, and provide for better quality programming when they come to doing record keeping and tracking and finding information on criminals or people who are arrested. So I think it's something we need to do desperately, and I think it's something that should be done right now. That's why I'm supporting this in here in Atoma community.
And I just want to thank Tim Richman, that he developed this PowerPoint that we're using tonight. So actually, before any questions, where we're moving from here, we'll be giving this presentation to other entities, such as the 911 Board and Legacy. Again, this is just to get everybody up onto speed. We're not asking for any money at this point or anything like that. I just hope that we have your support in moving forward on this project. Any questions?
Yes, I think it's a great concept to have a centralized system, but what would happen if it ever went down? What's the backup plan?
Well, the good news is, is Central Square, they will have a warm, a warm backup or standby system that will be in a other physical location. So if our servers were ever to go down, we can immediately get back right up. I think it's, is it 15 minutes? About every 15 minutes, the whole system gets backed up. So at worst, we would lose about 15 minutes of information, so to speak. Part of annual costs or occur with this type of vendor is all maintenance, the servers themselves, all that is taken care of by Central Square. I'm sure IT Ed is extremely excited about that. He won't have to deal with any of that software, those systems. That also, those recurring costs also include about five years is the life cycle of the server, and every five years, we'll be getting a new server from Central Square.
So it's not a cloud-based system, it's a server-based system?
Yes.
And then I just have one other question. I think it's great that more law enforcement agencies are going to Central Square. Do you have any idea how many in Iowa currently use that system?
I think I would ask Mr. Milton on that one.
I think that in talking with some of the vendors, if you don't mind, I think there's about 10 that I know of right off the top. And then there's Ames and Dubuque are on a different platform, but you know, can they use this similar one, which are similar in sizes, Atoma, Model County, like Marshall County, Marshall County's one.
That would be in the state of Iowa, but there are several thousand, over several thousand agencies across the United States that use Central Square.
Thank you. Any other questions?
You know, Chief, just if I may, this is, this issue of the joint dispatch has been an issue that I've heard about since I started on the councils almost eight years ago. And when it was explained to me the first time, you know, it made sense, and I've often wondered why we didn't, you know, CIP something like that before now. Now, with all the stuff we have to do in the city, it's pretty clear that we, you know, we have our CIPs for certain projects that have to get done. But I heard a council candidate saying in the forum the other night that, and they were totally correct in saying this, that when we have art money like this and grant money like this, those types of money should be spent on things we normally couldn't do that are important and necessary to the community. And public safety is, if not the biggest part of the community or most important, in my opinion, because it's the safety to people. You have my full support on this. This is the first time I've ever seen, even in this, you know, shorter version of a presentation, has opened a lot of doors and opened my eyes to all the functionality that's in here. I really can't believe we haven't been any closer to something like this in the past, but I'm totally glad to see that. And time savings and getting officers on the streets, you guys won't be frustrated on all the report, you know, because I've rode along and I've seen all the report, the time that goes into writing reports, how detailed they have to be. But yeah, this has my full support, and I'm just glad to see that you guys are bringing this to us. I talked to the sheriff about it and told him about my support for it. So like I said, I can't think of a better thing to spend money that's, you know, allocated in these kind of forums for this. Be a great deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
One quick question.
Go ahead.
So you, this looks like there's going to be a lot of efficiencies created. Do you think when all the dust settles, that you'll be able to reallocate some of your human resources between both departments to utilize them in other places?
Well, that, absolutely, that more time on the streets. I mean, just to, just to give you a quick example, you know, right now, let's say, an officer goes and takes a report on something, you have an incident report, maybe an arrest report, a complaint affidavit report, a witness statement, a voluntary statement. Each one of those forms, you have to go and add the person's name, address, phone number on each one of those separate forms. This type of software, as soon as you put that master name on one form, it auto-populates all that information on every other form in the system. So, I mean, just if that gives you an idea on that, what we're talking about, efficiency and a reduction in the time it takes officers in-house. But absolutely, there's proactive projects that we would like to do, but hopefully with becoming more efficient with our CAD and RMS, we're able to move forward on some of those other projects.
Do you think that that would hold true to the administrative level as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I think I saw in their material a 60% to 70% time reduction when the system is fully implemented.
Yes.
So, yeah.
I would just add, thank you for the presentation, excellent presentation. But yeah, this is well past due, so this would be great to get it going and get it implemented.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief, we appreciate that. Back to Phil.
All right. So I'll take just, the third thing I had on here was a presentation on TIF, economic development. I'm actually going to push that to the next meeting. I think we've got the public hearing regarding the Benita Project, for example, and I think that might be better timed with that, especially with the people that might come from the public, they can hear some of that information at the same time. If there's anything specific that the council needs ahead of that, I'll definitely forward that on with regards to that project, and then address the rest of it there. I do want to touch on just a couple of things that came up at last night's forum. I had the opportunity to be able to take that in. And specific to this, I just want to state for the public, no official vote has been taken on the Benita Project. There is no approval, there is no development agreement. That's actually one of the things that will be coming up at November 2nd or any subsequent meetings. We can't have a development agreement without a tax increment finance district, and we can't have that without an urban renewal area and plan. So there are several steps that have to happen before any of this other things can happen. It was mentioned last night about Marshalltown and a 20-year deal. There are, I will say, some facts in that is that Marshalltown is also a JBS community, and they are also in a similar situation. In fact, with the same developer working there as well. And if I am correct, I believe they may have purchased property there. They do not have a deal that I'm aware of.
That's correct.
You know, so they're still in similar stages. What happened was, to the best of my understanding, and I do have a relationship with the city administrator there, so we have had conversations. In fact, she gave me a heads-up that the developer was coming and was going to make comments at the meeting, and so I was aware that they had stated. There was mention that we were in discussions or negotiation, former staff member about a, maybe offering or trying to negotiate up to a 20-year deal. And that's kind of where things were at. And so it was a back and forth between the developer, between staff. Nothing is finalized until the city council approves that development agreement and makes that official. So I just want to say that that has not happened. We are exploring, you know, any of the options that are available. The developer, obviously, when they're looking at this, they're looking at where their financial gaps are in developing the property, you know, what are they able to do? Are they able to do 36 units, 108 units, 490 units? You know, all those things, look, and dollars that they are able to acquire, whether it's from the city and anything we can offer, whether it's from state or federal programs, all of that goes into their costs. They weigh that out, and then they see what they can do. So those are some things that we'll bring forward at the next meeting. There were several questions that came up. Also, I think Councilman Dolby had some questions about TIF, and we kind of just took the first step, had the consultation meeting. There are still some other processes, plan and zoning will meet next Monday to also talk about the urban renewal area. So I guess maybe it turned into a little bit more of a presentation here than what I was thinking, but I kept it brief. If you have any questions from your perspective, or you're hearing anything from the public council members, I ask you to please forward those to myself or Zach, and we can try to get those worked into the presentation, get any of those addressed. So you are well-informed ahead of having to make a difficult decision, you know, in an upcoming meeting here. That said, moving on to the city election, that is on November 2nd, 2021. There are a couple of big things on there. I'll say probably the least, only because my understanding is there are three uncontested candidates. The school board is up on that ballot, so you can vote for up to three school board members, and there is no, nobody contesting, there's three positions, three people on the ballot. More importantly and more directly related to us is the city election, where we have three council members and a mayoral seat that are on the ballot. So we have narrowed it down now after the primary to two mayoral candidates and six people running for council. All of them are qualified and eligible per the standards of the state of Iowa. To the best of my knowledge, they are all citizens of the United States, residents of Iowa, more specifically, the city of Atoma, and at least 18 years old. To the best of my knowledge, none of them are convicted felons, currently judged incompetent to vote by a court, or have the right to vote in any other place. So they are both eligible and, on the other side, not ineligible to serve as a council member or the mayor. I implore all of the council members, based on my position and the code of ethics that I have for my position, I do not endorse candidates, put signs in my yard or anything like that. But like anyone else that is in the city and votes, need to take that personal responsibility to educate myself on the candidates, on any issues that are important to yourself, or in this case, myself, and make sure that we're doing our due diligence. As I mentioned a moment ago, I watched the candidate forum from last night that is available on the city's YouTube channel. You can find that there, and as well as the first one from before the primary, which has a few more candidates in there, but still informative and educational. Reach out to the candidates. Go to any events that they're hosting or holding. Get to know them and make the right decision for how you feel the direction of the city of Atoma should go, or continue to go, or however you feel things are. So please do that. Vote on November 2nd. And lastly, also important to the city, there is the Indian Hills proposal that is on that ballot as well. I personally believe that this is something that would be a benefit to not only Indian Hills and their campuses, but also the city and everything that we're doing here too. So I encourage you to educate yourself on that topic as well, and vote your conscience. That is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Phil. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and ask our community development director, Zach Simonson, to step to the microphone and tell us about an award that we've received, and it was included in your packet, but I think we should give him a chance to explain a little bit more about it. So Zach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. October's Community Planning Month, and in the month of October, the Iowa Chapter of the American Planning Association had its annual conference last week. And at that conference, the city's 2040 Our Atoma Comprehensive Plan won the Daniel, or the Daniel A. Burnham Award for a Comprehensive Plan. We were really excited about that. Plans are eligible for three years after they're adopted, and we won our first year of eligibility. And I think there were kind of two things that contributed to that. The first is that plans are eligible for three years because the jury tries to look and make sure that a city's using its plan. And so winning in the first year is a statement that we've done some things even in this first year, that we're convincing to the jury that we really are using that plan. In the staff summary, I included some of those things, the airport planning project that we started with in the last council meeting, the housing study that draft should be ready this week, the airport, or sorry, the hotel at the Bridgeview Center, the progress that's been made by the council and by other members of city staff on restoring the Civil Rights Commission. These are things that were included in the plan and that we've been making progress on. The other reason that I think our plan was selected is because the part of the implementation chapter that was related to diversity, equity, and inclusion was something that was singled out in the presentation of the award as being an example. The award's meant to represent plans that are making progress or making advancements in the art and science of planning, and it was pointed out that it's not something that every community's had a chapter that deals with, or a section of their implementation chapter that deals with, but that it could be a model for other cities going forward. And so those are things that we were really proud of and accepting that award. The other thing that I just want to make sure to mention is that that award, or that that plan was only completed because of support from the Legacy Foundation. They provided direction, they provided funding that allowed us to get that done, and so they were recognized along with the city as recipients for that award.
Very good. We're really proud of that and pleased with receiving the award, and want to personally thank you for your leadership and direction on that, because it was a major undertaking for our community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Zach. Okay, item E on our agenda, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to address an item on the agenda, we always give citizens a chance for input. We do listen to citizens and want to hear from you, so if there's something on the agenda that you're concerned about, now's the time to step up and let the council know. Seeing none, I'll move on then to item F.
Consideration of engaging commercial appraisers of Iowa Incorporated to complete an appraisal of transit property. an appraisal of transit property. Recommendation approved and authorized the city administrator to engage Commercial Appraisers of Iowa Incorporated to complete an official appraisal of transit property to comply with state and federal requirements.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you.
All right, I'll try to be brief on this. So June 30th of 2020 was the last day Atoma Transit operated from the Emma Street location. Per agreement with 1015, their operations continued over that following year. Earlier this year, the city received interest in the property from Waplo County Emergency Management. In order for the city to consider selling that property or a long-term lease, we need to be free and clear of any prior federal or state funding obligations, things that were used to help construct or reconstruct parts of that building and any other improvements that were done there. Per the federal regulations, that requires a specific type of appraisal that needs to be conducted, and the city would be required to purchase back the property. So it's very specified. I believe it is what they call or refer to as a yellow book. It needs to meet federal and state regulations. I see a councilman down there shaking his head. He's familiar, I guess. But in order for us to be able to, we owe so much money back on that, and typically what happens is the money is given and then it's depreciated over time as the asset is used. Because that asset will no longer be used for transit-related purposes, we need to refund that, those dollars back. And so there's nothing wrong with any of this. There's not a, you know, it's just part of those requirements. And what happens then is either they go by straight-line depreciation, what the value is left, or the appraised value, whichever is greater. And so we need to meet the specific requirements to make sure that the appraisal complies. After trying to reach out to people locally, I finally, and not succeeding in that, finally was able to get the state to give me a number of references of people that were able to complete this particular type of appraisal. And Commercial Appraisers of Iowa, Inc. is one of those that I'd be recommending to complete that for us.
Any questions for Phil?
Has Waplo County Emergency Management indicated whether they're really interested in purchasing the building or a long-term lease?
You mean which of those two?
Yeah.
Well, we've kind of talked about both of those, and I think some of that depends on how the city council would like to pursue with the property as well. If it's property we want to relinquish, and then you would go that way. You know, I said, they're looking at utilizing that, and I think it has a lot of the features that are very important for what they have. I mean, there is a nice conference center that can be used for a variety of things, office space, garage space, storage. It kind of fits all of their needs that they have. But yeah, so long-term, I guess it's going to be up to the city and working with the emergency management. Part of that may also come down to what the cost ends up being and what can be afforded as well. And we won't know that until this appraisal comes back.
Thank you.
Okay, motion's been made in the second. Are you ready to vote?
Take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 183, 2021, authorizing the mayor to execute an easement agreement for construction and maintenance of public improvements for the CSO Blake's Branch Phase Eight Division One project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 183, 2021.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. We have with us Larry Seals, Director of Public Works. Larry, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is the final easement necessary for the Phase Eight Division One project. The easement is required to allow new construction across private property. It allows for permanent right of access for future maintenance as needed. The permanent and temporary easement will be recorded and will be deemed to run with the land. The temporary easement is in effect during construction and allows areas wide enough for construction activities once completed, the temporary easement sunsets.
Any questions for Larry? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 193, 2021, authorizing an agreement for professional services between the city of Atoma and Design Workshop for a master plan for Greater Atoma Park. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 193, 2021.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Zach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. In August, the city released a request for qualifications for firms to develop a master plan for Greater Atoma Park. We received five responses from highly qualified firms from across Iowa and across the country. The cost summary of the firms was included in the packet. A selection team that included members of city staff represented the very 15 regional planning commission, and the Legacy Foundation met to review the submissions from each of the firms, and we selected Design Workshop from Raleigh, North Carolina. Design Workshop offered a competitive third place for their fee, but the scope of services and the proposed work plan was superior to the other proposals. The evaluation team was especially interested in the section of the work plan that described how Design Workshop would provide two site-wide alternatives in the planning process so that the city could choose between those to make a final plan. We saw that as value-added, kind of above and beyond getting one direction from the beginning, having sort of the two to choose from, really closed the gap, we thought, in terms of cost. The planning process is divided into two tasks. Task one is establishing a foundation of understanding, and that's scheduled the last three months. And task two is developing the master plan, which is scheduled the last six months, and all that'd be about a nine-month process, hopefully beginning as soon as possible. The process would involve at least two community meetings, and meetings, those would be meetings that are open to wide public participation, but also meetings with key stakeholders throughout. We've also, there is a requirement for at least one public survey, and we've discussed some other possible targeted survey opportunities, such as collecting, you know, surveys of feedback from campground guests, things like that. The proposed fee for the plan is $183,875 to $215,875, plus reimbursable expenses for travel. The Legacy Foundation is considering a contribution of $75,000 towards the project, and finance is also proposed, using existing CIP or maybe some of that ARPA funding as well. And we're going to also continue to identify more community partners to assist with the cost of the plan. But we do see the plan as an essential next step in moving forward with making progress toward the vision that was set for Greater Atoma Park and the comprehensive plan.
Good, questions?
If I can add real quick to this, and take any questions, I apologize. You know, some of the things that were mentioned even just tonight, you know, the importance of planning and doing things properly, you know, winning that award is evidence of that. The economic impact from just a one-week event such as the Babe Ruth Tournament. And really, that was one of the things looking at with the comprehensive plan and the vision there, was trying to really make the city of Atoma and the Greater Atoma Park area an area to increase the sports tourism and the economic impact with that. We also talk about just the quality of life aspects to the city, encouraging housing, encouraging development, you know, employees, employers to move here because there's employees wanting to live here. And I'll just say that, again, with the importance of the planning piece of this and why this is, I feel, a critical step, next step. Already, we have, where there's interest in moving forward on one aspect, tennis courts, but there's some conflict about where those should go that has been brought up. And, you know, so this plan, having the opportunity to really let all of these community partners, whether it's soccer group, baseball, softball, tennis, the school district, the county, ourselves, you know, we have the sports complex coming in, all of those things are incorporated into this area, and making sure that they are really mapped out in appropriate places to get the biggest economic impact. Make sure we have facilities in the right places and adequate parking. All of that needs to be done ahead of time before that first field goes in of whatever sport you're talking about. So that's why I'm really pleased to help back this. And this company who was on that panel seemed to really be, I'd say, the majority of the group that met, really hit on this one. Yes, it was a little bit more, but I think we're going to get the bang for the buck that we're looking for.
Okay. All right, questions? Councilman Myers?
Yeah. Zach, actually, I've been around long enough that several years ago, maybe 16, there was a plan requested by the city, and a lot of money went into it and a lot of development. And one of the keys was prioritizing. But as usual, oh, and then since then, there's been a legacy plan, and now here's another plan. And, but the thing is, we do these things, and then quite often, we just don't have the money. So I would sure be supportive of this, but the ARPA money, helping pay for the study, as well as get some priorities stated and actually get some things done with it, so.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just want to make a comment. Just my personal feeling is, I know the reason why this is important and has to be done for future movement on the Parks Plan. I just, I'm a little blown away by the fee and the cost, because, you know, it could probably be stated that this could be half of our contribution to seeing a fully constructed sports complex that we need in this town for many, many, many years. And so, you know, looking at these numbers, I certainly hope that is the case moving forward, that we will still find room to be able to contribute to that. I would hate to see the Parks Plan be funded, and like Councilman Myers said, possibly not used or put on a shelf in place of something our kids have needed for years in this community. So I will vote for this. I understand the importance of it, but I think we better make sure that we have a list of priorities for that ARPA money, too, because there are also other things needed that if a plan falls through, like so many plans do in the town, we would at least have something tangible for our kids to plan. So the price tag scares me a little bit. I'm fully ensuring and trusting you that you will, and I know you, Zach, will follow through with this and make the best effort to get this Parks Plan done in the coming years.
Thank you. And one thing I would want to say is that, in addition to whatever contribution we would make towards the complex, if we were able to take that entire area and provide the level of amenities that we want to, I think I would see that as speeding the complex, or the indoor sports complex, long-term. It would help it be sustainable because it'd be part of that hub, that area where the recreation's happening. I think that the membership plan that they're looking at is maybe a way of funding that. I think it would really benefit that if we had all of those services to wrap around that center. Absolutely.
Super good. Thank you.
Okay, ready to vote? Take the roll, please.
Councilmember Myers?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 195, 2021, approving change order number one and accepting the work as final and complete, and approving the final pay request for the river wall extension project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 195, 2021.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Larry, you have the floor.
This project raised the north side river wall between Hydro Dam and the Waplo Street Extension Bridge by one foot. The project was necessary for the river wall to meet FEMA's freeboard requirement. Work included prepping the existing wall, installing rebar, placing concrete, sealing the joints. The length was about 1,350 feet. Change order one increases the contract sum by $3,402.09 for quantity adjustments and wall repair. Creamer Concrete of Bloomfield, Iowa has completed above reference work according to the plans and specifications, and this will authorize the approval of change order one with final payment released and releasing of all retainage. The new contract sum is $60,147.63.
Any questions for Larry? I just want your assurance that once we get this all completed, we will meet the requirements for the core on the levy.
Well, we're working through it. We've still got some stuff ordered. We've got all the profiles raised as soon as we finish the wall on the west end. We're still waiting on some stuff for the temporary panels. That's everything that should meet the freeboard requirements on the profiles.
Good. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Have to give you a hard time about that, Larry. Okay, take the roll, please.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 196, 2021, approving change order number two for the Milner Street Reconstruction Project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 196, 2021.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you.
Go ahead, Larry.
In order to complete the Milner Street reconstruction, we had several small items that was added as the project was being built. For example, the contract replaced a leaking sewer service. Most water mains was installed with the street open to residential traffic, and after installing gravel was placed on driveways to maintain access to the house until the street was closed and then ultimately reopened. Cleanout covers were added. That was more effective than removing cleanouts away from the sidewalk, so they're actually steel covers that are embedded in the sidewalk itself. And again, that was a more economical method to solve that problem. And then added working days, 48 days for extra work performed and delays due to staging changes. Original contract was $2,505,053.77. Change order two is for $8,495.05, so the new contract sum is $2,513,548.82.
Any questions for Larry about that project?
I have one, please.
Go ahead.
So Larry, I had an occasion last week to actually go down from Mary down Milner and understand that all the way to Richmond, we had already done some of that. But I'm just curious, it looked really good, the sidewalk, the street, everything, it looked really good. So is that completed the way you hoped it would have been?
The Milner Street turned out really well. Keep in mind, there was two separate projects that run concurrently. We had the street portion and the trail portion. It has been, seems like for the last year, a year and a half, quite a struggle to get utilities out of our way. One of the companies finally took responsibility for some of the pulls that was in the alignment and moved them for the trail section, so it's a little bit separate. So we have one panel left with that, but the street is 100% other than punch list items.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 197, 2021, fixing date for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with HCI 52501 Investment LLC and providing for publication of notice thereof. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 197, 2021.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the recommendation.
Second. Thank you, Bob. Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution sets a date for a public hearing for a development agreement for the 108-unit housing proposal on Benita Avenue. Last meeting, I gave a long overview of that project. I won't do that tonight, but I can answer more questions about it. This resolution is just to set a hearing for discussing the project as it was described last week and taking a vote, if the council wants to take a vote that night. This does set November 2nd as a pretty busy day and also a pretty substantial day for that project. Schedule-wise, Phil mentioned this, next Monday, October 25th, the Plan and Zoning Commission will make a couple of recommendations about this. They'll make a recommendation as to whether or not the Benita Urban Renewal Plan conforms to the general plan for development of the city. They'll also take a vote on the site plan for this project. Neither one of those are public hearings, and they are very limited in scope. They're just looking at whether or not the plan is in conformance, and they're just looking at whether or not the site plan meets the zoning code. But they are open public meetings. People would be welcome to join at that meeting, and they may have the opportunity to speak. That'd be at the discretion of the commission. This would be on November 2nd, a public hearing that is open for any comment, and there'd actually be at least two public hearings now for that night. There'd be the public hearing for the Benita Urban Renewal Plan, which would authorize a development agreement, and then there would also be a public hearing for the development agreement, if we get that far.
I think you made a very good distinction there, Zach, and I, again, for our candidates who are running for mayor and council, it's important to recognize that we follow the state law and the local ordinances to the T. And the idea that people don't have a voice is ridiculous. They can come to the public hearing, they can come to the planning and zoning, they can certainly call you as council people and talk to you or to the city administrator. So there's plenty of opportunity for input, and I would just say, if they don't come and share their concerns at the public hearing, I don't want to hear a lot of griping or complaining after the fact. So let's either, as they say on the street, put up or shut up.
I'll just make a quick comment on that. In the six- In the six-plus years that I've been on council, I think that this may be the first or second most amount of comments that I've received on any agenda item that I've taken part in. So people did listen last council meeting when we asked them to voice their opinions on this particular subject.
Zach, I just want to thank you for clarifying that this is setting a date. This is not voting on the project, but in order to vote on the project, we need to set this date.
Right.
So I wanted folks to know that that, you know, I would be, of course, obviously in favor of setting a date for this. I still remain opposed to a portion, a segment of the proposed development agreement. I am certainly not against housing or housing for JBS workers. I think that's an awesome thing to do. I just, I think there's other ways to get there, but thank you for clarifying. This is just a vote to set the date.
Thank you.
Ready to vote? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
No.
Motion carries three to one.
Resolution number 198, 2021, authorizing the mayor to execute an easement agreement for construction and maintenance of public improvements for the Richmond Avenue Pump Station Improvements Project.
Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 198, 2021.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Larry.
This easement is needed to allow for the connection of a pressure line to the Richmond Pump Station. The pressure line was actually installed with a previous project as the street was removed and replaced some years back. The permanent and temporary easement will be recorded and is deemed to run with the land. The temporary easement is in effect during construction and allows areas wide enough to construct activities once completed. The temporary easement does sunset. I would add to this, it's necessary for the project, but unfortunately, we let this project and had no bid, so we will be back before you at some point as we maybe figure out more of why our contractors did not bid. So far, the information we've got back was a lack of staff and operators and a few other things that seem to plague in our construction companies.
Okay. Any questions for Larry? Take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 199, 2021, approving a 28E agreement between the Atomoa School District, the Friends of Atomoa Parks, and the City of Atomoa related to establishing tree nurseries. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 199, 2021.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the recommendation.
Second. Thank you.
All right. So earlier this year, Friends of Atomoa Parks had presented an idea of creating one or more tree nurseries through the park board. The board at that time approved of the concept and was working with staff in the Atomoa School District to identify a couple of areas where tree nurseries could be located. The entities, School District, the city, and the Friends Group, with the assistance of the city attorney, had drafted the attached 28E agreement for consideration and adoption by resolution. So essentially, you can see as it's laid out there, each of the entities have some responsibilities. The cost of the fencing, the initial trees, and a lot of that infrastructure is being sponsored by the Friends of Atomoa Parks. The locations on the School District property were ideal. Thought was to try to help encourage volunteerism and teaching of ecology and other things of the students. When available, the students would participate and help and be able to have Arbor Day celebrations or different things within the nurseries. End product, as the trees mature, I believe the city is to get 80% of those trees for parks and other areas, and the School District get 20%. It's laid out in the agreement there. I just want to make a quick note. It was pointed out to me that it still says draft agreement. I guess it is a draft until it's finalized, but this is the final draft, ready for adoption. We'll get a clean copy for signature if it is approved. But all three entities would be, myself and the other two that were involved, had looked at it and approved of it to concept. It'll be before you here now, the school board at a future meeting, so. I'll take any questions.
I think it's a wonderful project. I guess the only question I had was in the 2080 agreement, there was no attachment that talked about the sites that the school is planning on putting these nurseries at.
Yes, so I apologize for that. That, the two sites that are looked at right now are at Liberty and James, both those school districts, and we'll get those submitted and attached with the 2080 agreement. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. Item J, we always give citizens, again, a chance to give us information about anything in the city or city business, so is there anyone that wants to address the council on any item? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to make a few comments. Like to congratulate K. O. Leonard, high school senior here, who just recently won the state golf championship. It's the first time in a number of years we've had a champion from the Atomoa community, so congratulations to him and his family. It's been a great accomplishment for him. Recently, Phil and I sat in on a Zoom meeting with the Attorney General's Office and Waplo County and the City of Atomoa were named in a lawsuit for the opioid settlement, and we had to register and get a number or qualify for this. And so I have done that, and we have opened a file. It's probably going to be sometime next year that that'll get settled, and the amount of money that is available to the community and to the state of Iowa will be determined after the attorneys reach a settlement. The case could be as high as $90 million for the state of Iowa, so it's significant. Zach, we've already had the comments about the comp plan and the meeting for the Benita, I guess, urban renewal area and TIF, so we'll leave that sit at this point. I would like to suggest to the council that we consider a mini-evaluation of our city administrator and review him. I think we hired him a little over 18 months ago, and he's done an outstanding job, in my opinion. And I think it'd be appropriate to review him before the end of the year, especially since we're going to have a turnover of council and mayor, and those folks will not have had the direct opportunity to work with Phil, and I think we ought to recognize that. Also, I'd like to ask our finance department to help explain our collection of fees and where we're at with our nuisance and violation fees, and give us maybe just a short presentation on how that is followed up on. It seems that we have some long outstanding debts that are over several years old, and they're just sitting out on our books, and I know we just hired a new accounts receivable person, so maybe they haven't had a chance to do that, but I think it'd be something that'd be good education for the entire council. Somebody mentioned planning and the esports. I think Andy Whartonberg talked about the esports. Walter Day is going to be bringing a brass plaque to the community on November 10th, recognizing Atomoa as the birthplace of esports, and there will be a presentation downtown. I'm not privy to where exactly yet, but it'll be at 2:00 on November 10th, and we will be getting some press and probably have to work with our police department to block off a part of the street for a while to do that. So with that, is there any other business for the good of the city?
I just wanted to mention, we had received an invitation to apply to become an overnight town for the 49th edition of Regbri, so we'll be looking to get that application submitted in by next week and see where it goes from there.
Okay, very good.
Your honor, I got one comment.
Sure.
Just real quick, it was brought to my attention, I'm not sure how accurate it is, I hadn't had a chance to ask staff, but I do want to give a shout out to our campground hosts. They're tireless workers. They go above and beyond the call of duty at our campgrounds, and I think our campgrounds are going to be one of the key areas that we hopefully will focus on developing another area in the future. I won't be here to see that, but I will be viewing it from my home. But that is, I believe, as the mayor likes to point the phrase, a diamond in the rough because it brings in revenue to the community, provides the community a great place to camp and attend events and stuff like that. And I know they worked, since we've had the hosts, they've worked tirelessly, you know, just in talking to them and seeing what they're doing, and extra mowing and, you know, cutting wood and doing those types of things. And I think we had maybe possibly the second-highest year in campground revenues this year. And so that's hats off to those folks. They're doing a great job, and from what I gather, they're coming back again next year. So maybe we could look at making their stay a little bit more enjoyable by making sure they get a piece of the pie that they've created. So anyway, hats off to those folks.
Very good. Thanks, Matt. That's a great compliment. Anything else? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.